Good evening. It is now seven o'clock. We want to start right on time this evening. Want to welcome everyone to our monthly board meeting. At this time, we'll have our certification.
And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where as section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. You've heard the motion this evening. Are there any discussions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Do want to read in your hearing tonight before we proceed, the mission of Franklin City Public Schools. The mission of Franklin City Public Schools is to work in partnership with students, families, and the community to provide enriching opportunities to empower individual learners to maximize their potential in becoming critical thinkers, productive citizens, and lifelong learners. At this time, we'll ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. We're going to ask Mr. Edwards to come tonight and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Pamela Kendrick, roll call.
Mr. Robert Pope.
Here.
And Mrs. Ed McKean.
Here.
Mrs. Berta Jackson.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Hall Leonard.
Here.
Mrs. Jeanette Austin.
Here.
Mr. Will Cantor.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, have approval of the agenda. A motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, that we approve our agenda as presented tonight. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Good news. Dr. Bell?
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, board members. We have good news this morning, which, this morning, this evening, which pertains to our Virginia Cyber Camp initiative that we were chosen to participate in this year. For your viewing, we have attached this in your board docs, as well as the ITRS has have it up for the public, and it reads, "On behalf of the Virginia Department of Education and the Board of Education, please congratulate your students for participating in the statewide pilot, Virginia Cyber Camp 2016. We are pleased to announce that more than 700 students participated in the program, and more than 265 educators received professional development and training from the Cyber Innovation Center, a division of the National Integrated Cyber Education Research Center. Their experiences and activities will have a significant impact on building the pipeline for K-12 education to meet Virginia's cybersecurity workforce demands." Certificates were enclosed for those students from Franklin High School. Have disseminated those to the Franklin High School staff, but at this time, I would like Mrs. Shakwita Kendrick to stand up. Mrs. Shakwita Kendrick was spearheaded this initiative and led the charge to get our kids into this Virginia Cyber Camp initiative. When students return, we will make sure that those students receive their certificates.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Kendrick. Thank you, Dr. Bell. On board clerk, Mrs. Kendrick, do we have anyone tonight for citizens' time?
No, we do not.
Okay. At this time, we have action to approve the minutes. We get a motion? We'll take one at a time.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to approve the school board meeting minutes for a call school board meeting on July 21st, 2016. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Having heard none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the call board meeting, August 4th, 2016.
Second. It's been moved and properly second that we approve the minutes for the call school board meeting, August 4th, 2016. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I abstain.
Thank you.
I won't speak yet.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Motion is carried. Okay. Next, 3.2, financial reports and updates. Dr. Bell?
Madam Chair, board members, at this time, we would like to call Mrs. Levica Jerrel to walk us through the vouchers for approval and the monthly financial report, the budget and QZAP report.
Good evening, Dr. Hall Leonard, fellow board members, Dr. Bell. You have approved the vouchers for your approval?
Anyone have any questions in reference to the vouchers? If not, can we entertain a motion at this time to approve the vouchers?
I make a motion to approve the vouchers for financial vouchers. The monthly financial report and the monthly financial vouchers and QZAP report.
We're just the vouchers.
Hold on, hold on one second. I believe just the vouchers at this time. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial vouchers.
Second. It's been moved and properly second to approve the vouchers as presented tonight. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
You now have the QZAP report for your review, as well as the monthly financials. And as you see, the monthly financials, I have the categories for our general fund, and the designated amounts for each category for this fiscal year, and I do ask the board to approve this budget for fiscal year 1617.
Okay. After your review tonight, are there any questions, discussions? If not, will we have a motion to approve the monthly financials and also to approve the QZAP report?
I move that we approve the monthly financial and the QZAP report.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second to approve the QZAP report and the monthly financial vouchers. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jerrel.
Report of the superintendent.
Madam Chair, board members, tonight, first, we have the professional development log for your purview. Are there any questions at this time with the professional development log for July 2016?
Before you move, our tech person is moving quickly. Go back up for me. She's right on it. The 2016 Summer Institute in Philadelphia, was this just a recap, or is this ongoing training for Avid?
Mr. Edwards, would you like to enlighten us on that, please? Or did he step out? He stepped out?
He stepped out, okay.
I have someone who was present.
Where specific to the FBA and BIP for the community who may be listening, looking at this, could we, for clarity for the community?
All right.
What is FBA and BIP?
Ms. Teresa Alvin Vaughn. Come to the podium, please, Ms. Vaughn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Reset your question, please.
Yes. It states here, "FBA and BIP for professional learning for the community who may not be educators." Could you break that down for us? What is FBA and BIP?
Most definitely. FBA stands for Functional Behavioral Assessment, and BIP stands for Behavioral Intervention Plans, and this goes along with our IEPs with exceptional education. VideoE sponsored this at no cost to our teachers or participants, so this is ongoing training that they provided free for Region 2, and we were blessed to have two teachers and myself, we attended July 11th and August 8th.
Thank you.
Any questions, you are.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Madam Chair, Mr. Edwards, would you come forward and enlighten the board on our Avid training at the Summer Institute this summer? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Bell. Good evening to the Franklin City Public Schools Board. The Avid training this summer was primarily to a continuance of Franklin High School and JP King, and also the emergence of the program process at SP Morton Elementary School, and it was the principal, assistant principals, instructors who went to the Avid training, and again, it's a continuation of JPK Franklin High School and the emergent program at SP Morton. And the professional learning communities, that also is an embarking on a process for SP Morton and JPK, and that continuation will be a hybrid component which takes place next Wednesday and Thursday for all teachers and staff at JP King and also SP Morton, where all teachers will be thoroughly immersed in the professional learning communities process at Franklin High School, beginning at 7:30 a.m. and ending at 3:45 each day.
Okay. I believe we had the training last school year, and you all did implement the professional learning communities?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Thoughts? Any questions?
I would like to ask Madam Chairman, if it's possible for us in our professional development report to get the names of staff members who participate. For instance, I believe that there were teachers who went to, who participated in Avid training?
Avid.
And there were teachers, I heard you saying principals, assistant principals?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Who participated, now whoever is that?
On the end.
She would have to move down.
Oh, go all the way.
Oh, here it is. It's on.
All right, wonderful.
We can definitely do that, Miss King.
To get the names of all staff, because I'm sure they received certificates for training.
Oh, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Yes, it's right there. Go back.
Okay.
She's so fast.
All right.
Yes, it is. I see it right on the side.
All right, very good.
Yes, ma'am.
Good, thank you.
We'll make sure it's there. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for your thoroughness.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much, Mrs. Howerton Vaughn and Mr. Edwards. Dr. Bell, at this time, the MOU, and that's Memorandum of Understanding Updates.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, board members, at this time, I would like to present the monthly update that is deemed and called the Memorandum of Understanding, which involves our four essential actions of our MOU: curricular alignment, human resources management, purpose and direction, as well as leadership and governance. You see the activities that transpired between July 18th and August 11th within our departments. If there are any questions at this time, we will please, we will entertain them. And of course, you know, this is an ongoing process until we meet our criteria for acity.
So there were no reports or anything from MOU presentations or elements to DOE during the month?
On yesterday, we had a meeting in Richmond that we had to attend. The elementary school, Dr. Davis, as well as Mr. Edwards attended, and we will prepare you for briefing if there are any further questions on that next month. Yes, ma'am.
Under leadership and governance, Dr. Bell?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe your administrative staff participated in a retreat?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have just a brief discussion on overall how that was, your retreat, administrative retreat?
All right, who wants to inform the board and enlighten the board about our retreat? I'm not going to call anybody out. I'm just going to see who wants to stand up.
Did they choose Mr. Phelps or Mr. Edwards? Which one? Okay. There you go. That's good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
From my part of the retreat, we reviewed the strategic plan, and we updated it to include the data for 2015-16, and we set our benchmarks for this school year, and we're now working on our goals for 2016-17. And also, we reviewed our data from the 15-16 school year accreditation data, all kinds of data, just lots of data.
I shared with the team the revised employment procedures, the revised observation and evaluation procedures for this coming year, which included all the dates and deadlines, the schedule for monitoring of those observations, and the visits that will be making to view those and look at the feedback. Also, policies, new policies that had changed back in May and over the summer and even in February that would affect some of the implementation of things, some of their practices at the schools, things they needed to include in their handbooks and inform their staff about, and just gave general personnel updates regarding recruitment and retention.
And we rounded out with the... And so, we also embarked on blended learning success with our principals and assistant principals. Blended learning is the component of a hybrid model where we have face-to-face and also technological advances, such as the iPad device that our students use, and we started that presentation with our principals and assistant principals, and our principals and assistant principals will take it to the teachers and staff at each school, and it's our quest and our pledge to be a future-ready school division, you know, to meet the kids where they are in this 21st learning environment.
Oh, we like that. Blended learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, is that it? Mrs. Francis, were you going to say something? I thought it sucked.
Well, we did, we took all of that, and then we, as the principals, we have to take it back to our building and play in professional development, so that's what we're busy doing. But we learned a lot, and blended learning, you know, that helped a lot with our technology, with our students. We had a good time. It's just now we have to dig in.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. The division focus for the retreat was called a growth mindset, and I think, boy, you've heard me say before, the first two years, we have been in triage, and we don't want to continue to be in triage. We want to continue to grow. So strategically, systemic, systematic, and sustainable movements to make sure that we continue to grow as a division. We have grown in these two years. We want to continue to grow. We've had stretch goals that we discussed in administrative retreat. Our stretch goal, as you've heard me say before, that in everything we do, we want to meet that metric of being 90% proficient in everything that we do, or better. Growth mindset, we looked at the research behind it, as it pertained to our demographics, so we, it aligned itself beautifully with our demographics, so we can see the importance of having a growth mindset, and how we have to continue to make sure that our kids receive that hope and receive that encouragement and receive that motivation that they may not receive at home. So our entire administrative retreat, with everything they said, was about continuously growing to make sure that this is the recipe for Franklin City Public Schools to be the best division in the state.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bell, and thank you, Ms. Conaway, for reminding him. We didn't want him to take it home. Yes, because as our administrators and staff are growing, then we can pass that growth mindset on to our students. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman. We have admitted motions out of closed sessions.
Okay, we'll go back and get that. Thank you, Mr. Counsel. Okay. All right, so let's go back. Right now is a good time to pause. Let's entertain the motions from closed session.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion to accept personnel agenda.
That's second. It's been moved and properly second to accept the personnel agenda as presented. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I believe there was another motion?
Madam Chairman, I would also make a motion on non-resident enrollment, 0801, 2016, to accept.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and properly second. You've heard the motion that we approve non-residential enrollment for student 0801, 2016. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you so much, Mr. Counsel. Okay, moving forward. All right, unfinished business. 5.1, second reading of policy DJR.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we delay discussion on that until after our audit review.
It's been moved and properly second to delay discussion on policy DJR until after the audit review. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Now will be the time. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. 6.1. 6.1, that's the first reading of policy EB revised.
Yes, Mrs. Wade.
Mrs. Wade?
Dr. Hall Leonard, Ms. Jackson, board members, and Franklin community, I bring to you tonight for first reading file EB, which is the policy entitled "School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan," and the revision that we're recommending to you actually is on page two of that policy, because you all had previously approved back in July, the revision of policy EBCB entitled "Safety Drills," and in that policy, that called for a change in the way we do fire drills and lockdown drills during the year. It, it pretty much says that we must hold a fire drill two times during the first 20 days of school, and then we have two additional fire drills throughout the rest of the school year, and that's the same thing for lockdown drills. Well, our policy EB was in conflict with that, because it was still calling for monthly fire drills, so basically, we have just aligned policy EB with policy EBCB to state that the fire drills will be at least twice during the first 20 days, and two additional ones during the remainder of the school year, and the same thing for lockdown drills, twice during the first 20 days of school, and then two additional ones for the remainder of the school year. So we wanted those two to be in alignment.
I would like to ask Mrs. Wade, would there be a conflict that we were to consider this as a first and second reading this evening? And my reason for asking is that school is going to start way before our next board meeting, and this is so important. I'd like to see this policy revised and implemented prior to our next board meeting.
Yes, ma'am. That would be great, because it's already going out to our parents in our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. It's a part of our crisis plan that has been revised for the 1617 school year. It's already policy that you approved, you know, at the last board meeting. It just wasn't revised in this particular policy, and we just wanted it all to be aligned. So I, I agree with that recommendation, yes.
Any other discussion or comments that we would accept this as a first and second reading and move forward with the motion? At this time, we'll entertain a motion?
I move that we adopt, or approve rather, policy EB as revised this evening at this given meeting, except this is a first and second reading.
Second. It's been moved and properly second that we approve tonight policy EB revised as presented. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? As the first and second reading. You've heard the discussion? You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I sat in on the safety committee meeting.
Yes.
Which Lawrence Whiting chairs, and that was excellent. Well done. Well laid out. Good work.
Terrific.
Very good. Okay. 6.2, 2016-2017 Franklin City Public Schools Crisis Plan.
Madam Chair, board members, at this time, Mr. Whiting will come forward to entertain any questions for the 2016-2017 Emergency Crisis Plan. This, a lot of things have been updated. The team did meet and review this. So last year, what we did, we did approve this, however, it is also for FYI, so it is the board's will tonight, what you would like to do with 2016-17. It can be FYI, but if you want to approve it and make it solid, then please do so. If possible...
Anyone have any questions, comments in reference to the emergency response plan?
Say, if possible, if you're going to approve it, then if you could do the first and second reading for the same reason, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Sure, this is what you would like for us to do?
Word that changes, Mr. Whiting.
There were some changes. Most of them were updating. There were a couple of other minor changes, but for the most part, it's the, it's a revised copy from last year.
So you didn't have your changes highlighted or underlined, drawn through or anything?
I'm not sure in your, in your copy, I don't think it is, because we were, we actually did that when the committee met, and we made the changes right there with the safety committee. Yeah, Mr. Hope was on that committee.
Mr. Hope, were you in on that?
It was great, and I concur.
Okay.
And I would like to make a motion that we may approve this on a first and second reading.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and properly second that we approve tonight the crisis plan for 2016-2017 as proposed and accepted as the first and second reading. You've heard the motion. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. 6.3, request to auction items. Dr. Bell?
Madam Chair, before I speak on 6.3, if the board would like to see what the revisions or the strike-throughs, we can email that to you if you would like to see. For the crisis plan.
Yes.
If you would like to see that.
Yes.
We can send, Mr. Whiting, we can send it to them. Ms. Kendrick, pass it to Ms. Kendrick.
Thank you.
No problem. The corrections.
Yes, I would like to see them.
So you'll see it.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So everybody will see it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Request to auction items. Mr. Whiting, come back for the request to auction the items for three vehicles.
Good evening again. We had three vehicles at the, that are down at the bus garage that are, the Ford Contour. That vehicle has not worked since I've been here. One of the buses has a, a very substantial oil leak, which causes it not be able to run for very long, like more than five or 10 minutes. And, and the other bus, the engine has expired. So we'd like to remove those vehicles from the, from the fleet.
Wow.
Looking at auction off vehicles such as these, where's the money?
Back into the general fund.
General fund.
Yes.
I think that the one with 305,764 miles speaks for itself.
Yeah.
That one was pushed to the last degree, wasn't it?
Pretty much. I mean, they've all done their service.
Right.
We've got our money's worth, I guess.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve these three vehicles to be auctioned.
A second.
It's been moved and properly second to approve the request to auction off the three division vehicles, 1995 International Bluebird School Bus, 2002 GMC Short Bus, Bus 22, and a 1997 White Contour Four Door Sedan. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Whiting.
Okay, 7.1, important dates to remember. We may rely on our board clerk to help us with this. Okay. Mrs. Kendrick? You don't have those?
You can't see.
Okay, thank you. The annual community breakfast and opening convocation, we'd like to invite everyone. That's August 23rd, 2016, 9 o'clock a.m. I believe the location is the Paul D. Camp Community College Regional Workforce Center. That's August 23rd, 2016 at 9 a.m. Then we have a call school board meeting. Let's back up. School building walkthrough. That's August 31st, 2016, 10 a.m. to 12 o'clock p.m. And then a call school board meeting, September the 8th, 2016, 6 o'clock p.m. Board members, you should have also received communication from our board clerk in reference to August the 13th, October the 13th, for the follow-up with V SBA on board development in Charlottesville. That's October the 13th. All right, we have another one that we want to include. That's on August the 30th, a meeting, a joint meeting between city council and Franklin City School Board. That's August the 30th, 6 o'clock p.m. Did we miss anything?
Location to be determined, we're still.
Any questions? Did I miss any, Mrs. Kendrick? Okay, all right. At this time, we have business for school board members, 7.2. And we're just going to, we have V SBA Code of Conduct for school board members and policy BG, and that's BG Procedures, which is BGR, Board Staff Communications.
I asked that that item or those two be put on the agenda, and I don't know, we don't need to discuss them tonight, but they talk about communications between school board and staff. And BGR talks about the chain of command that people go through. And to me, they contradict each other. So I'd like for us to read over that and talk about it at our next meeting.
At the will of the board tonight, that we will read over and come prepared to discuss at our next meeting. Anything else, Mr. Holt?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to recommend that we invite Reed and Smith in to have a discussion of the audit findings.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and properly second to invite Reed and Smith to come to speak to our school board and have a discussion on the recent audit findings. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Holt. Okay. At this time, the V SBA Code of Conduct for school board members, Mrs. Kendrick, were you able to print that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, were you able to, we are, everybody can see it on your screen? All school board members? We wanted to revisit the V SBA Code of Conduct for school board members. If you recall at our last meeting, July meeting, Mrs. Kendrick read the V SBA Code of Conduct for school board members, and we all signed. However, we did not articulate it ourselves. So at this time, as a board, we would like to read through together, starting with, right at the beginning. Are we ready? Together. As a member of my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education and to that end. I will have integrity in all matters and support the full development of children and the welfare of the community, Commonwealth and nation. I will attend scheduled board meetings. I will come to board meetings informed concerning the issues under consideration. I will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input. I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and establish a process for accountability of administrators. I will encourage individual board members' expression of opinion and establish an open two-way communication process with all segments of the community. I will communicate in accordance with board policies, public reaction and opinion regarding board policies and school programs to the full board and superintendent. I will bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing our laws, state regulations and court orders pertaining to the schools. I will refrain from using the board position for personal partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. I will respect the confidentiality of privileged information and make no individual decisions or commitments that might compromise the board or administration. I will be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs, such as those sponsored by my state and national school boards associations. I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia. Therefore, let's read the last clause. Therefore, I will always strive to demonstrate appropriate behavior conduct as a public school board member. And we each sign. Thank you so much. Wanted to read that in your hearing tonight for the community as well as our faculty and staff tonight to let you know that we are governed as a school board. We lead together as a team. It is a team. It's a board, it is a team. Not, not any of us speak individually, but we speak as one voice as a school board. Mr. Counsel, we would like to thank you for your years of service and your willingness to continue to serve on our school board. Mrs. Jeanette Austin, we want to say thank you for your willingness to continue to serve on our school board here in Franklin City. We want to thank Ms., our vice chair, Ms. Verda Jackson, for your willingness to continue to serve on our school board. We're going to save Mrs. King for last tonight, and that is intentional. We want to thank Mr. Robert Holt tonight for your continued efforts to serve and your willingness to serve on our board. Mrs. Nancy Godwin, who's unable to be here with us tonight, we thank Mrs. Godwin as well for her continued loyalty and willingness to serve on our board. Mrs. Edna King has been our school board chair for many years, and tonight, we would like to applaud Mrs. Edna King for her years of service as our school board chair. At this time, we have a presentation. We'd like for everyone to please stand and applaud her.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Mrs. Kendrick, the plaque, we want to make a presentation. Thank you. Yes. Mrs. King, we'll take this with you.
I will. I can walk now.
We're going to ask all board members to come down with her.
I can walk now. See? As a matter of fact, my doctor has been cured, because I had done very well outpatient therapy. And my doctor last week said, "To the king of that." So I have the confidence yet.
That's okay, we're walking well tonight.
Thank you.
We'd like to read this. On behalf of Franklin City Public Schools, we recognize and honor Mrs. Edna R. King for your service as board chair. By word and deed, your presence has enriched the lives of students and served as an example for all. Presented this 18th day of August, 2016. Thank you so much.
It was my pleasure to serve in such capacity. I think that I came on the board at a time that we had not reached maybe the good feelings that we have just now. And when I stood before many people and they wanted to know why I chose to serve on the school board, I said it was because our school board and functions of school division were not governed. And I still believe strongly in the fact that that is one thing that we have done. We have moved our schools into successful accomplishments of our students because when I came on the board, I insisted that we became governed according to the Constitution of Virginia. Schools operated according to our state government, and that's not where we were when I chose to serve on the school board. And I knew that such lack of governance resulted in poor achievement of our students. And we saw evidence of that. We have made extraordinary, great gains, and I commend staff. Most of all, I commend teachers. They are the ones with the boots on them every day, working with our students one-on-one. And I have seen the accomplishments. When I looked at the SOL scores for this year, and I saw the results of what you've done in just exemplifying all of the potential that you have in advancing education to the framework, I've been exceptionally pleased. I commend you, and I hope that this year, we want to see most of our scores in 80% time. That's the challenge. 80% time. We need to keep striving. Congratulations to you because successful means only results in what you did. Thank you. Thank you. Can I make sure my flag? Oh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, also, under business of school board members, if you all notice, I'm sure you noticed, now Franklin City Public Schools, our staff have their nice badges. But did anybody notice your school board members have gotten on board? And tonight, we have our badges on. We would like to thank our board clerk. Let's give her a hand. She's been working on that for us. We're unified. Also, we would like to extend thanks tonight to Mrs. Kendrick. She not only got our badges for us, but we also have our business cards. So when we go out to, like, we went this summer, some of us went to the Virginia Conference on Education, and we were asked, we had such a wonderful presentation by the middle school assistant principal and Mr. Collins, Mr. Parker and Mr. Collins, that some, I know someone asked me, so, well, do you have a, a, a card? Business card?
Yes.
And I said, no.
And we did. We did.
Well, I didn't have it with me.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I didn't have mine with me.
Yes.
And so I, I, we just appreciate, let's applaud Mrs. Kendrick again. Thank you, Mrs. Kendrick. Now, if, board members, if you look on the back of your cards, Mrs. Kendrick has on here clearly defined for us, she has the steps, the steps for protocol. Questions or comments should be addressed to. And then they are listed right on the back of our business cards. Thank you so much, Mrs. Kendrick. She's a wealth of knowledge and always doing something for us, not only the board, but also the school division. Let's applaud her once again. Thank you, Mrs. Kendrick. Also, just want to shout out our, our city council tonight. We had our new teachers luncheon, and we were pleased to have our mayor who attended. And I believe at our table, it was the, the mayor, Mr. Frank Rabel. Also at our table was Mrs. Mary Hillier, councilman. We also had council representation from Mr. Greg Maculum-War and Mr. Johnson. Did I miss anybody? Oh, and our city attorney. No, we can't forget Mr. Williams.
I was there for the school board.
But we wanted to shout them out tonight. We also want to shout out that in our audience tonight, we have Franklin City Public Schools Councilman, Mr. Barry Cheatham is here with us this evening. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for supporting our school. We want to, want to commend you for that. What was that? And we didn't have any snacks or anything for you tonight. He said, "That's okay." Thank you so much for coming. Before we close tonight, before we have a motion, because that's going to be quick. Before we close tonight, some of you commented on the, the greetings and welcomes from the luncheon, and I just want to commend the staff because some of you actually remember the mirror. So we just want to say, pass it on, if, for those who may not have attended the luncheon, pass on the law of the mirror. I would like to say that, I'm going to shout out Joseph P. King right now. We, I was talking to a couple of the new teachers at the luncheon, and we were just doing a recap on the law of the mirror. And the law of the mirror says that you must see value in yourself to add value to yourself, and ultimately, you'll be able to add value to others. We just wanted to inspire our teachers that every day, when you get up this school year, school's getting ready to start in September, to see value. And also, when you study the law of the mirror, now, a mirror allows you to reflect, to see a reflection. And as I was talking to one of the new teachers, we were talking about middle school and the challenges often that middle school students face, and how it takes really a special person sometimes for that middle school student. And you know what? She turned her m- school student. And you know what? She turned her mirror. She turned her mirror. And when I say turned her mirror, she began to reflect. She said, "Oh, wow. Maybe that's why I chose to be a middle school teacher, because I had such a difficult time in middle school." That's the law of the mirror. She turned that mirror, and she saw a reflection. She started reflecting on why it is she became an educator. Why did she become a teacher? So pass that on for all teachings, because it was for new teachers and administrators who were not present, that this year, they will just, just hold it up, see the mirror. Thank you so much. Anything else from any board members tonight? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
It's been moved improperly second that we adjourn. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Have a good evening. Seven fifty-one. It's the end. I'm about to dance.